December 13, 2017, Planning Commission meeting. The order, first order of business is agenda changes. I don't have any if you'd like. Is anyone else here? Second order of business, public comments for non-agenda items. I assume everybody's here for the public hearing. Correct? Great. We will quickly move on to the Public Hearing Act. So, a public hearing is on housekeeping changes to zoning and subdivision regulations. Our aim tonight is to get public feedback, good or bad. We'd like to hear it, so please feel free to speak up and speak your mind.
Can I say a few things?
Please.
So, on the table, there are copies of several things. One is a seven-page summary of the changes. And it lists the section reference or section number and then what the change is about. So, that sort of, in very quick terms, tells you what the change is. Additionally, there's a report that's generated, required by state statute, explaining how the changes comply with the town plan and with state statute. Not as interesting, but there's still some information in it. And then there are the actual regulation documents. And these are track changes versions, so you'll see strikeouts where text is proposed for deletion and underlining where text is proposed to be added. So, what I recommend is, as we talk about one of these, let's say someone in the audience says, "Well, I want to make a comment on Section 2.6." Maybe find it on the summary page. And then, if you have the track changes version and want to see what the actual language is, go ahead and reference it. I'll be putting all of that up on the screen, the actual track changes. So, if it's easier to just look at that and look at your summary, that works too. We did receive comments from, I think it was nine people, ahead of time via email. I encourage folks in the community to do that if they were more comfortable making comments that way or couldn't make the meeting. And there are copies of those comments on the table as well, if you're interested in seeing that. And at some point, maybe after the people who are here have spoken, we should walk through each one and just recognize it and go from there. And we're all here, planning commissioners and staff, to answer questions. But ultimately, these people are the ones that get to decide what gets, what happens and then gets forwarded onto the Select Board. So, I tend to talk a lot, but don't let me overwhelm things. And feel free to direct your questions directly to the Chair or a planning commissioner. Procedurally, the way zoning changes work in the state of Vermont is that the Planning Commission is the lead committee that works on changes. And they do the hard work, the dirty work of thinking about what's needed, doing the research on what other towns do, drafting the changes, debating them. And then, the point of all that is to get to a relatively clean proposal that the community can then provide feedback on. That's the purpose of tonight's public hearing. The Planning Commission is required to hold one public hearing. They could hold more if issues came up and more substantive changes to certain sections needed to be made, that would be their option. But they're not required to. So, this is their required public hearing. And once this hearing is over, whether that's tonight or if they continue it to further meetings, they can make further changes to the proposal. And they don't have to come back to you and tell you what they did. So, the reason for that is that they don't actually decide on these changes. The Select Board does. And so, whatever changes they make, based on the feedback you give, will be formalized and presented to the Select Board. And then, the Select Board will go through a similar process, hopefully shorter, where they review the changes, they might make some tweaks and adjustments of their own. And then, they will, they will hold at least one required public hearing to get feedback before they can adopt. So, that's how the process works. There's nothing formal about tonight, so we can just have a conversation. And we'll see what the Commission decides to do in terms of moving it forward. Typically, we have a hearing, there's some discussion, and then there's another future meeting where they take more time to discuss what was heard and make any refinements. So, I doubt that there's going to be a vote tonight to forward anything to the Select Board, but that's up to them. Just to wrap up how the process can work, in towns like Heinsburg, regulation revisions do not go to the voters. The Select Board is the entity that decides on them. However, the Select Board has the option to send a batch of regulations to the voters if they think that they don't want to make the decision, there's something particularly controversial or something like that. If the Select Board were to adopt the changes, the voters do have the option of petitioning for a townwide vote. And that actually happened in 2013 with some rural zoning changes that the Planning Commission proposed, the Select Board adopted, and then a group of citizens petitioned for a townwide vote. So, that is an option, just so people understand that. Once it gets much further down the road at the Select Board level, if they adopt these things and there's some cause for concern or some reason for a townwide vote, that can be petitioned. That's all I have. Oh, right. And VKM has provided us with this lovely portable mic. So, Joe will recognize you and I will give you the mic. If you could just wait for it, that way we'll have a good record.
Yeah, if I could ask, just state your name as you're getting up, so that you have it. All right, I'll open it up for comment and questions.
Okay, I'll go first.
So, Missy, just tell us who you are and then speak up until our VKM fan gets that mic ready, because this mic should still pick you up if you talk loudly.
Okay. My name's Missy Ross, and I live in Heinsburg. And one of the things that I have been concerned about over the years, it's just one of my little things, is exterior lighting and the impact that it has on rural areas. So, I was really pleased to see that you were moving toward implementing downcast lighting for all new projects. I think that's the right way to go. And I just had a little bit of a concern with Section 5.29.1, which is on Page 109, that basically says, "Noncompliant lighting installed prior to the enactment of this section shall continue to be used even though it's nonconforming." Oh, I guess my question is, does that mean if someone is not in compliance with their permit that they got?
So, Missy's question is a technical one that she briefed me on before this hearing. And I think she's noticed something that we need to fix. So, the intent of this section is to say, "Landowner X, you have some lighting at your house, and suddenly the zoning changed, and that lighting is now not complying with the requirements for downcasting and that sort of thing." "That light was there before zoning. You're not compelled to replace that lighting, so you're all set. Don't worry about it." The way it's worded, it would accomplish that, which is a basic zoning tenet. You can't, you can't compel people to change things that were in existence before a regulation. State statute requires some provision for noncompliant uses. But, the way it's worded, it would also bless lighting in approved subdivisions that have already had conditions related to downcast and shielded lighting. So, imagine in 2002, the DRB approved an eight-lot subdivision that included a condition saying, "All outdoor lighting should be downcast and shielded." And someone in that moved into that neighborhood, didn't realize the condition was there, replaced their outside lights, and they just had nice beaming spot floodlights. They would not be in compliance with their subdivision approval. And the zoning administrator, should they notice or get a complaint, could work with them to bring those lights into compliance under the DRB approval. And the way this is worded, it could potentially stop that, which was not the intent of this. The intent was to cover folks who were under no obligation previously to install lights of a certain type. So, we probably should make a change to the sentence, Missy's saying, just to clarify that.
Does that make sense to everyone?
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah. Thank you.
Can I follow up on that? If somebody's coming in for a change in their site plan and they had nonconforming lights, could you at that point ask them to change them, even though they weren't coming in for lighting?
Yeah, the way the wording is up here on screen says that, "Project subject to development review, Development Review Board review shall remove and replace nonconforming lights if the project includes new or revised site lighting, or if the Board otherwise determines it's necessary because it's a particularly egregious noncompliant light." So, it wouldn't be automatic. If they were coming in to add two spaces to their parking lot, didn't need any additional lighting, it wouldn't be automatic that they would replace noncompliant lights, unless the Board thought that the light that was there was so bad that it warranted it. It would be a judgment call.
I'll start. I have some others, if you want. I just wanted clarification on the first thing, which is, where you don't need a subdivision, is that if just a portion of the property is being?
Can you?
First page of subdivision.
Regulations?
Regulations. I think it's Page 2, where you're changing under boundary adjustments. It says, "Changes in boundaries between two adjoining parcels without the creation of any new lots." Well, isn't by definition, if you're changing a boundary, you're creating a new lot? So?
No.
No?
Let's say one person has 10.7 acres and the next person over has 3.3, and they want 0.7 acres to, you know, make their lot four acres.
Okay. So, it doesn't have to include the whole lot. You would just be changing. Okay. So, then the question I have, it's kind of similar to that, which I think is on the page about surveying, 2.1, 2.1.2, number 2, a survey, which is, yeah, Page 3. It says something, "Approximate acreage is acceptable for parcels that are not being fully surveyed." So, what's the definition of a survey? And if it's not being fully surveyed, what do you mean by that? So, maybe you can have an answer for that or just think about it.
Does one of you want to take that, or do you want me to?
Please take it.
Okay. So, a survey is a description of property lines and easements, typically using meets and bounds, so bearings and distances from reference points, iron pins, known landmarks, that sort of thing. Surveys can include, can be a comprehensive survey of an entire parcel, or they can be a survey of a portion of a parcel. So, frequently, when there's a dispute over a boundary line, a surveyor, a landowner might call in a surveyor to just clarify a certain section of their boundary, not their entire property. And so, what this, the substantive change here is that currently, when folks want to come in and do a boundary line adjustment, a survey isn't required at all. And this change would require a survey, but it would allow for that survey to be constrained to the area in which the boundary line adjustment was happening. So, if you own 200 acres and you needed to adjust 20 feet over, you know, 100 feet of your boundary line, you wouldn't be compelled to survey the entire 100 acres. It would just be that area.
Well, but in certain situations, you are required to do a survey of the entire property when you're creating lots.
Through subdivision, yes.
Through subdivision. So, I didn't see in the definitions about whether you have a definition of survey, because I think that word gets used in other parts of the regulations, maybe that you're not reviewing right now. But I would just like to know that there's consistency there in language.
So, you're suggesting added definition of survey?
Yeah, added definition, just what you said today, which is what I understood to be the situation. But I just thought it might be good for that to be clarified. Then, again, back on Page 2, there's 2.1.2. The sentence, I think, needs a subject. It says, "The shall submit to the zoning administrator." So, the?
The interested parties.
Oh, got it.
Sorry.
It's tough with the track changes.
Yeah, I see too much red here.
Yeah.
I've got lots more, but I'll give it up to somebody else.
Someone else like the mic? Great attendance. I'm sure somebody has kind of.
Just Alex for clarification.
Go ahead, Peter.
I remembered, and I'm probably not right about this, but the boundary adjustment and transfer of land to a joiner, the difference was the size being transferred, one was under. So, can you just quickly explain what's happened? There's no transfer.
What's happening here? Yeah. So, what's happening is, we are collapsing those two into one review, which is boundary line adjustment. There's no, there's no limit to what, how much can be transferred, I don't think. Let me make sure. Just got to quickly zoom to the definition of boundary line adjustment.
I think we talked about that very point, was there a size?
Yep, I believe you did talk about that. And just want to make sure I know where we landed. So, yeah, the way this is worded, it collapses both of those into one, and there's no, there's no limit on how much can be adjusted. But there is now a survey requirement for whatever is being adjusted. And, oh, sorry. Previously, with the transfer of land to a joiner, boundary line adjustment was for smaller transfers, transfer of land to a joiner was for larger transfers. And the transfer of land to a joiner required a trip to the Development Review Board for them to confirm that the zoning administrator was correct and that this was not a subdivision to create new lots. And under this protocol, it would no longer go to the DRB at all. The zoning administrator would be trusted to understand that no new lots are being created and could approve it administratively.
So, if there's an existing survey, you don't need to modify that survey?
Well, that's a good question. Let me get back to that section. There are two types of surveys, as you know, in our world, in the town office. There are those that are approved by either the Planning Commission in the old days or the Development Review Board nowadays, and recorded in the town clerk's office. And then, there are surveys that are recorded in the town clerk's office but were never part of any approval. They weren't reviewed by the Development Review Board or the Planning Commission. If the two parcels involved in the boundary line adjustment, if either of them are part of an approved, recorded survey, then this is, this option, this administrative option is not available. They have to go through a formal hearing and revise the subdivision, revise the approved, recorded survey. If it's a survey that the town never approved, but just somebody recorded because they wanted to have it on record, then that, this more simple process could happen.
Bob Thieffels.
This pertains to associations, and I'm not sure where this all fits in here, but I did read, read on Frontiers forum, some of the changes that were happening. And one of those was that it's being considered that a person can now have, say, like a building on his or her property that can be rented out, can be rented out.
Accessory apartment. I think that's what you're talking about.
So, would that override the covenant that an association might have? Would it?
No, Marie's right. Yeah, it would not.
The association rules.
The association supersedes.
Correct.
Yeah. And we've actually had an instance of that, right in the village area, in the Thistle Hill development. A property owner had a large house and wanted to convert a portion of it to an accessory apartment and actually started the process, I think even got the permit from the town, and only afterwards realized that it wasn't allowed from their association, and they had to sort of discontinue the use. So, yeah, this won't, this won't override association or deed restrictions or anything like that. You want to pass it back, Bob?
Well, my understanding, this is a little bit off the subject, but there is, you know, the state law says that you, this is about clotheslines, right? That a homeowner's association cannot deny the use of clotheslines.
Right. That was an interesting piece of legislation a few years back, when it was the clothesline bill.
The state also has said that you have to allow accessory apartments, haven't they?
It has said that municipalities have to allow them.
Oh, okay.
It doesn't compel private landowners or associations to allow them. They could. It might be something like a clothesline law someday, but.
Other comments?
I'll throw another one out. 3.2.3.
In the zoning or the subdivision?
In the subdivision.
Okay.
I did all subdivision first, I think. It says, it's about writing up of decisions, which I think it appears in a few places. And it's worded a lot, I think, stronger than it had in the past, or strongly in the past. And I'm just wondering whether the way, the reason for changing that wording, and is that kind of going to make it necessary for every decision to be reviewed by a lawyer to make sure there's not loopholes in it that can then be challenged? Or what's the, is it really just similar wording?
So, you're in 3, 2, 3 here, right?
Yeah.
No, this really just parrot state statute that compels a Board to provide the reasons for, for its disapproval, you know, the grounds.
Yep.
And that's something that our Development Review Board has been doing since they were created in 2001. They have a fairly rigorous decision with findings of fact and conclusions of law, and then order with conditions. So, I don't think this will change our practice, won't require additional legal review.
I'll give you another minor one. 6.5 is about landscaping. And you have some changes in the zoning ordinance about landscaping. And I thought maybe it should be consistent in the zoning one about suitable soils.
Yeah, that's a good catch, Andrea. Let me flip to the zoning, so we can see what section you're talking about. What section is landscaping? Oh, right. It's in the site plan section. So, let me jump over to that. And we have new language. Where are we here? Right. So, in the landscaping section of the zoning, we're making this, we're adding a new provision that talks about special attention being paid to site prep and soils. And you're right, this same language is reflected in the subdivision, but we, but I forgot to make the change there. That would be a good thing to make consistent.
Good catch.
This is why former planning commissioners never really die. They just move on to the Select Board and then come back and remind us when we did things wrong.
I'll do one more, and then.
I'm glad to turn this over to somebody.
Yeah, we'd love to hear from other people in the audience. You're on a roll, Andrea.
Okay. 6.10.7, about building envelopes. This seems to be allowing a great deal of flexibility to landowners and basically saying, "You can make your whole lot a building envelope." Or you could create multiple building envelopes. And I feel like that is really what we're trying to do with the new zoning, was to kind of limit fragmentation and reduce the amount of impervious surfaces. And seems like it's a way of creating a couple lots on a single parcel by calling it, it ties in with the accessory uses, I guess. Or maybe I'm reading it all wrong.
You are not reading it wrong. This is a policy change, for sure.
Yeah.
And where, the genesis of it came from a discussion the Commission had about building envelopes and the frequency with which the Development Review Board has to hear revisions to those building envelopes. It seems like developers come in and do the best they can assigning a building envelope to a new lot, but when those lots are sold to a homeowner who then is going to design their house, inevitably, it's off by a little bit, and they need a little expansion here, a little expansion there. It's easy to say no to those expansions of building envelopes or revisions to building envelopes if the building envelope was based on preservation of certain important resources. But we've had plenty of cases where the building envelope was made very small, and there wasn't a good reason for it to be small. It just, that was what the developer said, the DRB thought that was fine. And so, the discussion sort of revolved around, building envelopes should be as large as you can make them to give the owner as much flexibility, as long as there are no impacts to the primary and secondary resources that we want to protect. If there's nothing there that requires a constrained building envelope, why would we have a constrained building envelope when typically, for a normal landowner who lives in Heinsburg today, their building envelope are the setbacks from property lines and streams and the road? And so, most Heinsburgers are constrained with regard to just those perimeter setbacks and stream setbacks. And the thought was, for new subdivisions, why not give those lots the same flexibility as long as we aren't impacting ag soils, core wildlife habitat, all the various resources that actually create the need to define a building envelope?
Yeah, but I think the biggest issue that you are creating is that, you know, you're not reviewing those, those primary resources, but by allowing a larger building envelope, you're really just allowing people to create more impervious surfaces, to clear greater areas for, that will create greater fragmentation of the forest. You will be, you know, impacting ag soils, you know, that you just, I feel like you could really be asking developers to do a better job of thinking about the design and the size of the house and what structures might be there. Because really, our goal is to, of these zoning is to protect those systems within our forest and our ag lands and our rivers, not to give carte blanche to people to just come in and clear cut the forest because they want a big building envelope. And so, that, I mean, it's just, it's definitely a policy decision that I.
But what I was trying to get across is that if there are important resources on that lot, then the building envelope will remain constrained.
But I think the important.
But if it's a lot that has forests that are not significant, or has meadow area that is not agricultural soils, isn't valuable with regard to soil mapping, then if there are no sensitive resources there, why would we, why would we not allow someone to utilize that if they wanted to put their garage there, or their accessory apartment, or their outbuilding, or their house?
I guess because from a policy standpoint, I see all of the land and those, quote, "resources" as part of an ecological system. And anything we're doing there is impacting that system, and it's all significant. So, we should really be trying to do the least harm possible. And by increasing this, we're really, that's a, that's a different policy. And I, you know, that's why I try to refer to the forest and the water as a system and not just as resources. It's not just a resource on that parcel. It's part of a bigger system. And I'll give somebody else a chance.
Peter? Behind you, Peter.
I couldn't agree with Andrea more. I think that we've worked incredibly hard to try to preserve the rural nature of a lot of this town. And the rural nature isn't necessarily that there's no development at all. It's just that development doesn't impact the sort of what you see there, that it doesn't stand out. And really, that's the hardest thing for the DRB to possibly regulate in any way. That, you know, we have a lot of important resources, but the real resource we have in this town is what it looks like. And by opening up these building envelopes, I just think you're absolutely, it's a very large policy change that I don't think should be in any way a minor zoning change. This is just something that I'm blown away by. You know, I agree, and I mean, I went through a lot of the building envelope changes. I think we should, we should make the process of changing building envelopes easier. It may be that you pick a certain reasonable size for people to spread their impact out on the land. We have to remember that any accessory buildings that are related to the use of the land aren't under these regulations. So this is really mostly, you know, living accessory structures. And I just think you're putting a huge burden on the development rehovers. Actually, no reason. You really should just have these building envelopes make it easier to change their size if you want to do that. If necessary, come back again when you've thought this out through. But it is hard to change them, it should be easier. But the answer is not just making them as big as, you can find no reason to not make them big. There should be a reason to make them bigger. The emphasis should be absolutely opposite of where the reason is now.
I understand your point, I think it's something worth discussing. Someone else, like Mike?
Thanks, I don't know if I'm referencing this well. My name's Stuart, S-T-U-A-R-T, Deliduka, D-E-L-I-D-U-K-A. My wife and I own Element Nail Salon. And one of the things that, when I was reading initially through Front Porch Forum, that I tagged, put it in my appointment to come here, I see that there've been some changes to what I initially saw concerning the lighting, and I don't have problems with it. As a business owner, I do think though, sometimes when words like being prohibitive and those things, I think there's a lot of signage regulations as there is. And I think that, you know, a case-by-case scenario may be a better approach down the road. Not understanding exactly what future businesses, where they're going to be located. One of the things we found is, although we do have a, we've been open for three years, probably we have a substantial business base from Heinsberg, but what allows us to grow and be successful, and to contribute to some of the activities and groups in Heinsberg, is our customer base, it's from outside of Heinsberg. So probably about 80% of our customers are from outside of Heinsberg. They're actually traveling through or to. So as far as the downlit signs and that kind of stuff, I think that that's fine, I don't have any problems. One of the things I wanted to comment through is the drive-through prohibition, which, when I read that, it caused me to think of a few things, and I just wanted to share those with you. I guess I'd reference it, I guess Alex, a proper reference would be 5.6.11.
Of the zoning regs, yep, I'll get to that on the screen here, Stuart.
Yeah, take your time. 79. Element Nail Salon. Yep, it's in Mechanicsville Road. A lot of people still in Heinsberg aren't aware of us, but yeah, we are there. We've been there since November of 14.
Same plaza with Grateful Dog grooming and Sweet Yoga and, yeah.
So, are you there?
I am.
I can't read from here, that's all good. So when we talk about, when I read through this and I looked at some of the strikes here about prohibiting drive-through windows and service, you know, I really don't think that type of prohibition is needed. I think about where, you know, 20 years ago, who would have thought ATMs would have been as, drive-up ATMs would be as prolific as they are. I also think that bricks and mortar businesses with the advent of the internet, they need to have the ability to be flexible, to be able to provide convenience. I think that there's a large population that we see as customers that are seniors and have mobility issues. And allowing them the opportunity to drive up for curbside service, I think, is important, especially with the aging population. I think what struck me is the possibilities that what would be prohibited. You know, I think of maybe down the road with some of the development with the Bizinet Field Project. You know, you're eliminating a village scoop shop or a village coffee shop, maybe a tack or animal feed store. I think of Guy's Farm and Yard, you can drive up and have that stuff placed in your car as opposed to purchasing it online.
Drive-through, I mean, they used to have a drive-through, I admit I used to use it.
Yeah, well, that's what came to mind to me. You know, it wouldn't impact me directly because I wouldn't, I don't need those types of products or services. But I know a lot of our customers around here in this, in our service area, which, you know, reaches down past Bristol, do have large animals. So that, I sort of think about, you know, as a small business owner, it's important for us to have other additional small businesses that we're able to feed off some of the customers back and forth. We get comments a lot, they come to us, but they're also coming to get their hair done, or they're also going to the drugstore, or they're also going grocery shopping. And that's sort of what we found to be important. So coming out and prohibiting that, you know, I, other thing, what about food trucks? That's something that someone would pull up to. Would you want, are you prohibiting having a food truck event potentially down the road? Just food for thought, that I think that, you know, there's so many future services that we don't know are going to come around the bend. And to put a prohibition out, one other thing that came to mind real quick is maybe the post office modernizes, and they have a drive-up window. So you could just drop stuff off, you don't have to actually get out and go to a mailbox. I think that a lot of parents with young kids, my kids are older now, so it's not so important, but being able to go and do things or pick up things that are curbside, I think is super important. And I just, when I saw that, that's basically where my comments are tonight.
Thank you. Stuart, you make some good points. I don't know how many people do their postal business in South Burlington, probably very few of you.
I do.
So do you know the one I mean? There's a post office there with a box you drive right up and go. Drive right up to, and I don't, I don't think most of us were thinking of that as a drive-through, we're thinking of Dunkin' Donuts, McDonald's, those kind of window service areas.
Sure.
But that's, that's an example of something that might unintendedly, you know, get caught up in this. In the same way that the Guy's Farm and Yard example, which is not a drive-through window, but is.
Curbside service.
Is a pickup at, you know, the rear of the facility, and it is a place to drive up a vehicle. But just so I'm clear, are you, you're pointing out some issues with that proposed prohibition. Is it, you're feeling that, that this change just shouldn't be made? Like, right now, we prohibit drive-through restaurants, but anything else is essentially allowed.
Right, but when I, when I read it, maybe I'm reading it wrong. It doesn't, it does not apply to drive-in movie theaters or drive-in restaurants where customers park and are served food by staff that walk to the customer vehicles.
Right.
Right? So, but when you see, when I, when I read initially on the Front Porch Forum, it referred to as service windows? And so when I think of a service window, I think of something that you walk up to or drive to through for a service.
Well, that's why I was trying to get clarity on what your suggestion was, if you had one, was.
My suggestion is the prohibition I just don't think is needed.
Gotcha.
Overall, because, you know, I could, just while I'm sitting here, thinking of a couple of other things that, you know, someone may want to walk up or drive up to to get picked up. Again, I don't have little kids, I know it was very frustrating for me when they were little to have to unpack them on weather like this, walk across a parking lot. You know, I know in some corners, you know, the term Hannafords is not a popular term. I live in Essex Junction, and I know from reading Front Porch Forum in Essex Junction that the order and go, or the pickup food service that they have there, has been widely used. There, it's created a pile of jobs, there's so much demand that they had to hire extra high school kids because there's so many moms that were getting out of work, picking the kids up at daycare. And they could actually order their groceries and just pick them up right there, have them loaded in their car. And I think that's something, if somebody that has a mobility issue, that would be of service to them too, just like going to the drugstore.
Yeah, if none of you get there, the Essex Hannaford, which was recently expanded substantially, has both special parking places for sort of pickup, where you can drive in and they come to your car, I guess. But then they also have, I think, two drive-up windows.
Correct.
More traditional window service as well.
So you basically order your groceries.
Right, and then you drop by.
You pay extra service.
Yep.
In some cases. And I think the Williston one's doing that now as well. I haven't used that, but.
I don't think the Williston one has an actual drive-up window. I think they have the parking places where they'll come out to.
Correct.
But the Essex one literally has like a.
It's unbelievable.
Like a bank drive-up window, where somehow they dispense stuff through the.
You know, I have family members that, you know, had surgery on hips and knees, and they were, that was lifeline for them, because it just prevented someone from going grocery shopping for them. So I just think down the road, I think it's important just to take a look at things that, you know, we just don't know what's going to come about. And, and when I look at some of the development, and I'm not fully up to speed as everybody in this room, but when I look at what some of the future commercial development's going to be, it's really not going to be directly on 116, it's going to be off 116. And so that being the case, you know, you have to sort of look at what type of conveniences and value added will those bricks and mortars be able to provide, to be able to separate them to stay competitive? Because at the end of the day, that's where a lot of that works on the brick and mortar. Or everyone can order online. And that's obviously a viable option that lots of people do.
Other comments?
Well, can you clarify what it was before you were implementing this?
Yeah. The section references are a little off, so you don't see strike-throughs in this section, it's in another. But currently, we have a, we have a prohibition on drive-throughs for restaurants. And there's a little bit of lack of clarity in the regs right now about banks. Because we have one district where drive-through banks are specifically allowed, and we have another district in the village area where just banks are allowed, but it doesn't mention drive-throughs. So we're not sure whether there was an intention to limit them to just that one district or not. But the outright prohibition is restaurants only at the moment. And we have had businesses, Dunkin' Donuts is the one that comes to mind, that have been interested in locating here and haven't because of that restriction. It does, it's not really part of their business model, or at least they try not to have it be part of their business model to exclude drive-through service.
May I speak, Ellen?
Oh, yeah.
So I'm one of the members of the board that was opposed to this. It was one of my first meetings, sitting on this board, and it came up. And here I sat with a cane, because I was not able to get around. And my whole life depended on how many steps do I take from my car to get into something? And the board, of course, the board mentioned that they wanted to promote walkability in the village. And I said, I think that's a great thing, but the fact remains, we are an aging society. And unless you get to this point where you have to deal with something like that, you don't truly understand how difficult it can be. So I would rather see it handled on a case-by-case basis because I truly believe that the Kenny Drug Store drive-up window for prescriptions is used by people that truly need to do it. And I know that it's allowed, but what if, like Stuart said, we don't know what's coming down the road. But I just think that it shouldn't be a.
I'll give you another real-life example today. You know, we were really excited, we were really excited, it doesn't impact us now. We ended up installing before this laundry, new laundromats that came into place this last week. But we were reached out by the owners of that to see if, us being a business using a lot of linens, if there was a need for a linen service, basically drop and wash and fold and that kind of stuff. And that option, we have a sanitized washer and dryer in our facility, so that doesn't apply to us. But it's nice to know that there was a backup. But, you know, I'm not that business owner, and I wasn't really up to speed that a new laundromat was coming in. I was surprised by that, but I was very happy. But when I think about it, I also think about, you know, the possibility that, of somebody maybe down the road with that type of facility, you know, having a window service or a curb service could be tremendous. If you have a young family and you're in housing that doesn't have a washer or dryer, just to have access to that without pulling the kids out of the car. It's just, again, I just don't know what's coming down the road, but I think it's important not to start ultimately excluding that. Because you will prevent people from maybe bringing in a business or service that you don't even know. Because when they start reading through that, they say, you know, that's, that's not going to work. And if you want to make it specific to a specific type of industry, then, you know, that's fine too. But I just, I'm in favor of you just not having that prohibition at all.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other comments? Please speak up, if there's something you don't like, if there's something you like, if you think there's something we missed, please speak up.
Caleb Casco, can you clarify why you think it's appropriate to classify temporary structures as permanent structures, like tents and things like that, that are obviously not permanent, that they won't last?
I think you're probably referring to camping?
Nope, I'm referring to 5.18.5. I'm on the smaller version, the summary, temporary structures.
All right, Caleb, let me get to the right section on the document. Thank you. Okay, so section 5.18 is the one we're on, it's up on screen there. And the section Caleb's talking about is 5.18.5. And Caleb, I can speak to this, it's been, as you can see, if you can parse the red and the underlining from the strikeouts, we've had language in our zoning for a long time that has talked about temporary structures and has been a little confusing about when they need a permit. You can see some of the language says that if a tent garage, which I think is one of the type of structures you're referring to, was in existence for more than six months, it needed a permit. But then at the bottom, there's a sentence that's been stricken that said, "Structures in existence for more than a year shall be considered permanent." And we, from the zoning end of things, we've always been a little confused on that and have told people to be careful and just get a permit if they're there for more than six months. I, you're speaking to the rationale for the original language and why we're keeping it and tweaking it. The rationale for the change is just to clarify this six months versus a year scenario and make it six months. The original reasoning for why we would require a permit of a temporary structure at all, I wasn't here when this was written into the regs, but I would guess that the reason is that once a structure, even if it's not a brick and mortar, sticks and foundation structure is there for a long enough period of time, it has the same effect as a permanent structure with regard to interfering with someone's property line, or their access, or whatever. And so requiring it to get a permit requires that it meets those setback requirements from property lines, from roads, from streams, that sort of thing. And as you know, those temporary structures can actually stay for years. They can become the full-time garage for a car or truck or whatever. So I think that, I think that's the rationale to do it.
They can, but requiring you to get a permit locks you into where that is. And it being a movable structure, you're then locked into where your permit says it can be.
Well, sure, you could always move it and have the permit be amended in that regard. Most people that I know of anyways don't tend to move these things, especially the larger ones. They get them set up, they've got storage underneath them, and that's where they sit for a good long time. The way this is worded now, if the structure was up for less than six months, wouldn't need a permit. So if it was a seasonal thing, there's still no permit necessary. But if it's going to go beyond that period, then yeah, you've got to define where it is, make sure it meets the setbacks, and that's the point of getting the permit is to make sure it complies with those offsets from property lines. But it sounds like you'd. But it sounds like you'd rather not see this section require it, yes?
I don't agree with getting permits for temporary structures, that you may wanna move or move onto another piece of property.
What do you consider to be a temporary structure?
Anything I can move.
So we.
Would you not uh though agree that uh temporary structures could have the same impact as a permanent structure in terms of uh maybe your neighbor's view or uh uh natural features on your lot? Or uh, you know, there are circumstances I could see that would have a derogatory impact on the placement of a temporary structure. It, uh, we're saying six months. At least in this.
And, and to clarify, in this case, a temporary structure means time only. So another change in these regs is to clarify um what constitutes a structure. And in the current regs, uh structures that can be moved around, like you put them on wheels or skids or something, um, one could argue that those aren't even structures under the current definition and therefore don't require a permit. And I think Peter could actually speak to the fact that there have been times when folks have said, well, I'm gonna build this thing on a, on a chassis with wheels. It's a shed, it's not really designed to be moved around, but I'm gonna do that in order to avoid getting a permit. So there are, there's a couple of changes happening. In the definition section, we're getting, we're making it clear that anything you place on the ground requires a permit is a structure. This section just says, um, anything you place on the ground like that, um, requires a permit if it's there for more than six months. Now, camping vehicles are not included in that, they get, they get exempted from that. But, you know, someone who builds a shed on skids or on wheels will be required to get a permit under these proposed regs. And someone who puts up a tent garage for more than six months will also be required to get a permit. So there's a couple of different changes happening. You might have concerns about both of them. So I would just draw your attention to the definition of structure or building in the back of the regs in the definition section. But I think your feedback is clear. You, you'd kinda like this section revised or stricken, right? So temporary structures didn't require permits if they were indeed temporary.
They, they do have to make setbacks.
A temporary structure?
If, uh, if, once they're there for six months.
They would then.
That, that's when the setback requirement kicks in. Let me scroll up, Peter, cause you're familiar with this section, I know. Yeah, my, my understanding is the way this is worded is you don't have to meet setbacks if it's, if it's there for less than six months. It's when you're required to get a permit that you have to, that you have to get that.
Think about the inflatable pool or, you know, whatever.
But, but Peter is remembering, there is a section of the regs that says, um, structures that are s- smaller, that we wouldn't require a permit of less than a hundred square feet, still have to meet setback requirements.
Sure, I, I thought they did.
Yeah, I, well, you were our zoning administrator. I don't remember us giving permits for, for structures that were up over, yeah, right. Um, I don't remember us giving permits or, or requiring setbacks we met for a structure that, say, somebody put up for the summer. Like they put up a tent garage, you know, June, July, August, September, and then took it down. Did, did we require?
No, I don't, I don't remember. I thought I did actually, but I don't know what I had to ask to do it. But I, I just think about the impact on a neighbor. You know, there's, there's no limit on the size of this structure. So you go up to your boundary line, which happens to be forty feet from the neighbor's house and you get up to whatever you want to and if no setback required.
Well, right, and you, but you could also think of it the other way, that, you know, family X wants to throw a, throw up something for a weekend party and they put it close to the property line. And neighbor Y now throws a fit because it doesn't meet the setbacks. And the neighbor's like, and the property owner's like, well, it was only up for the weekend, come on. Um, and that, you know, that that's not something that zoning is ever gonna fix, cause it was that temporary, the.
But I always felt that if the zoning, if the, if the uh process to stop somebody, regulatory process to stop somebody took longer than how long it was gonna be up, I didn't even bother.
I know you didn't. It was pretty sound, uh, sound policy. Well, so I, it sounds like you're making a different suggestion from Caleb's, which is, think about whether these temporary structures, regardless of how long you're there, should be required to meet setbacks. Um, even if no permit is issued, and I can make a note of that, we can, the, the commission can talk about it.
Do you have a list of what you're considering a temporary structure?
Um, as I said, it's, it's just time, so it's, it's.
So is a stack of firewood a temporary structure?
Good follow. Okay, so here's the definition of, here's the definition of structure.
Depends how you stack it, right?
Okay, so we're gonna get down to dirty here. Uh, here's the definition of structure or building. And as you can see, we're making a bunch of changes to it. And that's, that's it. Anything constructed, erected, or placed upon the land, including but not limited to. And then it has a variety of exceptions that go on and on and on. I don't think we put firewood in there, but um, we could. I will tell you that zoning administrators that have been in our office have been logical and common sense enough never to worry about firewood as a structure. Some people build structures around the firewood and we have DMOS to be structures, but not the firewood. But I think you're both pointing at something that probably weren't some additional.
Yep.
Um, thinking in, in how it's, how we're defining a structure and, and, and how the temporary structures are working.
Alex, I have a question actually about what our intention was. Six months, if your temporary structure is there more than six months, then you need a permit, which would mean you would need to comply with a number of our regulations that before that time, you wouldn't have to comply to.
That, that was our discussion in our intent, yes.
So now I set up my temporary structure and I don't worry about setbacks. I just put it where I want, close to whatever property lines.
When the neighbor complains, the zoning administrator says, hey, it's just temporary. If it's up for more than six months, I'll make him move it.
Right. Is that what happens then? I'm now seven, eight months into the time period. I have to move my structure?
You have to get a permit for it.
I have to get my permit and if I'm approaching any way in any of our regulations, we, I have to change things so I meet the regulations at that time.
Yep.
So it's kind of in retrospect, we go back and say, oops, now you're breaking the law. Now you're doing something that you can't do and you have to do it in a different way.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And we're set up to deal with that in our administration and.
Well, we're set up to deal with it the way we are with most zoning compliance measures, which is, thank you neighbor for alerting us to an issue. I'll, we'll talk to the landowner and see if there's a problem or not. Uh, we don't have a zoning cop walking the beat. Um, and um, we could do a better job on outreach and public education and we will. Um, but I don't think we'll ever have enough of that to uh, to ha- to make every citizen aware of every provision of the zoning regs. So oftentimes, compliance issues are brought up, uh, when, when there are issues. Because a neighbor mentioned that, yeah, or a town official drove by the property and saw something and said, I didn't know they had an, an apartment there, you know, that sort of thing.
I, I think that is a very good regulation, um, as it's written. Um, because it does give uh the town some uh enforcement uh capacity. And it also uh could give a neighbor some recourse if there is an issue around a temporary structure. You know, most people can put up with something for six months, but it, it looks like it's gonna be permanent and it's blocking a view or doing whatever else. Um, at least then they have some recourse uh under this, this statute. So I think it's a very good thing to keep something in there around temporary structures, at least time-wise. You know, maybe the definition has to become clearer in some kind of footnote, I don't know. Because, you know, I put my firewood right on the edge of my lot and I've never had anybody complain about.
You have someone right next to you.
What is the definition of uh downtime? So for example, if you have your structure up for six months and you take it away for a day and you bring it back, is that now starting over the six months?
Good question. What's your name again?
My name's Jesse Paul.
Jesse, sorry, not recognizing you. Um, that's a good question. Uh, the regs don't address that. So um, that's all I can say about that. The regs don't address that. So uh, the example Peter used to give that I liked was uh on a completely different matter, but it's an interesting analogy. Um, we charge two different fees for additions and accessory structures. So if you wanna build an attached garage that's attached to your house, um, it's forty cents a square foot, cause it's, it's just an addition on your house, it's connected to the dwelling. If you wanna build a detached garage, so it's separate from your house, it's an accessory structure, we charge thirty cents a square foot. Sometimes those fee differentials matter to people. And I remember Peter saying at one point, which I've heard other zoning administrators say too, that that question comes up, well, how much, how separated does it have to be in order to be a separate structure? And the answer was, if you can pass a piece of paper, you know, between the two structures, it's, it's separate and you get to charge the lower fee. I, I think in regards to your question, it, it might be similar. You know, if it's down for a, 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 on a measurable length of time, you, you restart the clock. But, but Peter might have a different take.
Well, it's, if it's down, you may start the clock. But if you just simply move it, you have to get a permit. Cause it doesn't say on the site where it is, it's in existence on the property.
I would, I would agree.
You, you've eliminated the loophole, people just moving all over every six months. If you wanna have it on your property after six months, you need a zoning permit. But if you're gonna take it down and then re-erect it, that's another issue.
That's how I would interpret it, but I, I don't know what a lawyer would say.
The herb pig shed comes to mind here.
You wanna flesh that out, you two, or what?
It's an agricultural structure.
There you go.
Okay, what about our existing non-conforming uses, uh grandfathered in? Like these trailers and box things?
No, we've had this section in the regs for a long time. Um, we're just clarifying, literally, this is a true housekeeping change or was designed to be. We're just trying to clarify when, is it six months or a year done? Obviously, there's some more complications that are coming up, which is great. But the, this section about requiring permits for temporary structures has been in the regs for years. Um, so if there is, you know, a container or some other structure that needs a permit and we find out about it, we can, we can take action. Yep.
But your question I, I heard is basically, how long does it have to be gone down?
Down or, or skid it off the property and then back on?
Not on that property and brought back before you can start the clock again. Does it have to be gone a day or what? We don't say.
Correct, we don't. We could, we could, we could add a, a, another sentence in here to define that.
If that's a way to deal with it.
Do you have a suggestion?
As a former planning commission member, uh, this I would call unfinished business from many years ago. And uh, what I, what I am wondering is if we could not make the twenty thousand square foot commercial or retail um limits a uh, a, a permanent, a, a thing that, that does cover all, all commercial lots.
I think the, I think the board discussed that at the last meeting. I personally did not feel comfortable doing that and calling it a housekeeping change. Uh, I think that's a really big decision. And I don't wanna do it in the dead of night. I wanna do it out in the open with discussion, understand exactly what we're doing.
That would, that would be fine, but at, I mean, I, I don't have anything, I have no problems with that at all, Joe. Um, but I was wondering, how does one go about doing that? This is, seems an opportune time to, to make a change like that or to ask for something like that.
Several, several of the board members expressed that interest. I think we are talking about it in January.
Yeah, that, it was interesting you bring that up. Jeff, uh, Fr- uh, French, who's not here tonight, writ- made the same suggestion. And the consensus at the last meeting was that it shouldn't be included in these changes, but that um, the next work project for the planning commission that will absorb probably all of 2018 is refining the village growth area zoning and introducing some better phasing. And, and the decision was made to make that the first discussion item in January, um, to talk about this twenty thousand square foot cap and whether it should apply to the commercial district.
You know, it, it, I, I feel like that really needs to be warned to have, you know, give everybody the notice to, you know, to come here and, and, and speak their piece on the issue. I don't want, slip something like that in.
Please, slip it in.
I, I would also wanna add that uh, it, it's our understanding that it's possible for, for this board to recommend a single item change to any of the zoning statutes. We're not, we don't have to have groups of things. We don't have to deal with the entire zoning or subdivision ordinance as a block and give to the select board that way. We can pick out one item and make a change to it or propose a change to it and bring that to the town, have public hearings about it, send it to the select board about a single item. So that's in our minds too, when we're discussing not only your question, but there were some other major ones that we're gonna deal with here in the next year that are of that sort. We don't have to spend the entire year working all of them out and then bringing all of them to the, to the town and to the select.
Thank you.
Someone else have a comment? Here.
Is there anyone else?
Didn't see anyone else.
Um, in the, in the same vein as my concern over the uh building envelope that Andrea raised, um, is the elimination or the, or, or allowing the possibility of uh another access, another curb cut for an accessory living structure? When the accessory structure concept came in and, and you have to allow them under state law as was raised, uh, it was the mother law apartment. It was for convenience and literally someone who's ill or someone who needs something. And I think that this town recognized that it really is a good opportunity to provide more living situations, some of them rural, which you don't get. And uh, we have a housing crunch that are, that are affordable and it really makes sense to um have a flexible accessory apartment regulation. My, my concern is, and it's the same as the, as the rural area thing, that by allowing this second driveway, um, or the, or the possibility of it, first of all, it sort of flies in the face of your, your subdivision regulations, which really require very clearly that if you're doing a subdivision, you cannot put a separate entrance in, if you can avoid it in any way, even if you have to go to your neighbor and buy a piece of property to share that with him. I mean, it's, it's a very strategic thing about curb cuts. And if you, I, I speak for him and I'm sure if I go to Mike Anthony, he's just, yeah, you know, don't have any more, don't have one more. But the, uh, just as an aside, I don't know why you have that very complicated formula that it ends up in every case can be twelve hundred square feet, except for houses over four thousand square feet. And if you have a beam of that size, then you get to have another one on your property. I would just advise you just make everything twelve hundred, which is very lenient. Um, twelve hundred square feet is bigger than the largest mobile home you can buy. And I think you should remember also that, that, that I can't see any prohibition in these ordinances for an attached accessory garage. A two-car garage is six hundred square feet, so you're up to eighteen hundred square feet. It really is not a small structure and it's, it's imposing on the landscape in a way that again, just makes it terribly complicated for the DRB to go through and find a reason to, to not do it. And, and, and my thought, and I, it's always been that, that the accessory apartment should really be kind of within the development area that you have on a piece of property. You have an accessory apartment, you know, I mean, people put them in garages and stuff, but it very quickly is becoming a way for someone to put a whole new living unit in an absolutely separate part of their. to put a whole new living unit in an absolutely separate part of their property that really has nothing to do with being an accessory to anything. It's just, it can be just rental income. And it just, I don't know why we keep encouraging that. I fought very hard to, it was eliminated and...
The separate access.
The separate access, but when we put that, it has to use the same driveway. That was put in lieu of saying that had to be near the house. It just meant, yeah, use the same driveway. Then you'd go across the field for half a mile, which had to use the same driveway. And that was a big argument between me and one of my better friends in town here. And I lost. And, you know, I just wish really that you would think about where you're going to develop and keep it there for all sorts of reasons. Part, the other one is just cost. If we're really trying to use these things as affordable, they're most likely there. But I just, I think it's opening the door a little bit, a little bit, a little bit to the possible expansion in a way that you're not anticipating.
Well, if you could, you know, this is sort of a tough one. We did seem to have it configured, maybe not in this town, but it seemed as if we're moving in the direction of some kind of proportional or percentage value of the square footage of the predominant structure on the site. And so, on the one hand, it seemed as if, you know, like a 30% rule, say, for example. I'm not saying that's what it says, but... So, if you had a 2,000-square-foot house, you could have an accessory structure, 30% of that 2,000 square feet. The problem, obviously, that doesn't work, but the problem with that was the larger the house got, that somehow the larger your accessory structure could get. And that also didn't seem like an equitable way to deal with it. So, then we got on to where we are now, which is some reasonable size, you know, ceiling limit. You start to lose that proportional relationship between two structures where you still like to have a primary structure and something that felt like a secondary structure on the site. When they move far away from one another, maybe it doesn't even matter anymore. But you make some good points and I think we'll likely come back to it.
Let me just clarify, Peter, that there are two basic changes being made, one of which is the one I know is near and dear to your heart, which is additional access drives or proximity to the principal dwelling. The other change about increasing the size allowance, it was done, if I can explain it, it was done to increase the maximum size allowance. But to still have that accessory apartment be no more than a certain percentage of the dwelling. And so, for very small homes, we're allowing them to be up to 75, the apartment to be up to 75% of the house.
That's what I was thinking about. It just, all I did the math that the, that all came out to 1,200.
It doesn't, it's not all 1,200. Yeah, so for someone who owns a 1,200-square-foot ranch, their accessory apartment will be 75%. And then there's a group of people in the middle that is 1,200. And then there's folks with houses that we don't really have many of where it's the 30%. And by state statute, at least my reading of it, we can't go below that 30% for those supersized homes. The state statute says that's the, you have to allow at least 30%. I think there was some discussion of making it just 1,200, you know, for whatever size home, but I don't think that that would hold up legally. But that's very different from this question about the access drive, which is a good one and one that this commission wrestled with and didn't have agreement on.
I wanted to speak to that because I was very strongly against, I agree with you, Peter, everything that you said. And I did bring some of those issues up to the board about the separate driveway. And I also researched what other towns are doing around us because I think that's important also. And there's not one that allows a separate driveway, other than Williston says if the existing driveway is deemed unsafe by the road foreman or the select board. And secondly, it has always been a policy, as long as I've been involved in town government, which is a long time, of the select board to really limit driveway cuts. And I think this would, and I know that Michael is very much opposed to it because I did talk with him. And I just, I agree. I think it would be a mistake to allow, I think it should be close to the house because otherwise you get into all the rules with subdivision. And cost is an issue. And these are affordable units, you know, this is, this was proposed by the Affordable Housing Whatever in the state of Vermont. That's why Act 17 got passed when Governor Douglas was governor. I'm not saying that it was because of him, but it was during that time. So, I also wanted to speak to, I do think there are mobile homes, 1,200 square feet. And as you know, when you were zoning administrator, you were seeing the mobile homes become larger and larger in the parks. Where most of these accessory units, dwelling units are being built, they're on larger lots usually. I think Andrea's is about the only one that's been done in the village that I can recall that's maybe on a smaller lot. But most of them are on two, three acres or more. So, I still think they should be close to the house. I really do. And not on a separate driveway.
I agree.
I agree. The reason, the reason we, or at least one of the reasons we decided on the second curb cut, we had been looking in particular at a parcel where the other option was to have, to, as you said, extend the driveway, you know, the entire length of this property in order to reach the accessory structure. So, it would in fact be less impervious surface to do a short curb cut to that accessory structure rather than building this, you know, this long extending the driveway. But still taking into consideration...
Basis of it, which is why is it out there anyway?
Because I think you then run into, well, what's it accessory to?
Right.
You know, what's the septic capacity? Where's the water coming from? I mean, it's, again, it's encouraging fragmentation. And I think it really does need to be in proximity to the principal dwelling that's there and that you run in, it's just an end run around creating another primary structure on a lot without calling it subdivision.
My name is Jeff Javone. So, up here, you eliminated it, right? No additional access?
No additional access drives are to be created. You're taking away that restriction.
Correct, and we're replacing it with the provision at the bottom that says within our most rural districts, these accessory apartments that are being built in separate structures have to be reviewed for their impacts on the natural resources that we would normally protect through subdivision. And so, that was the compromise that Maggie was talking about of saying, we'll allow there to be a separate driveway so that people don't just go in their existing driveway and then peel off in the same way, you know, for 1,000 feet. But we'll require that any of that development, the accessory apartment structure, the driveway avoids wetlands, you know, minimizes the impact on wildlife corridors, all of those sorts of things, which we currently don't do. And maybe we should be, and maybe we should be doing it with a proximity provision, but that was the compromise that was discussed is allow the additional access drive, but if it's, but review it, review the impact of the overall project.
So, seems like a roundabout way of saying it.
Well, I think the thought was it was a more direct way of saying what we're concerned about are the impacts. I'm not advocating for this change. I'm just trying to explain to you the rationale behind it. Originally, the staff's proposal for this change had none of this in there. It was about increasing the size of accessory apartments. And there was discussion that led to additional changes.
So, you're done?
Yes, sir.
Great. So, what I was going to say was, why not just say no additional access drives are to be created without obtaining a special permit? Thanks for letting me finish.
You're welcome. It was always my intent. Sorry if I offended you.
I do think minimizing curb cuts is an important safety goal as well as a cost-saving measure for the highway department. They do a lot of maintenance on culverts. They have to bring their covert car out for, you know, every driveway requires a covert. And it's time-consuming for them. I would not want to have a proliferation of curb cuts, I don't think.
Thanks for bringing that up because that was another point that Mike expressed to me when we talked about.
Can I ask a procedural question? Just because I'm not familiar, is there another hearing on this stuff after this? Or only, does it, you guys now incorporate some of these suggestions and then does it go directly to the select board for a vote?
So, we're only required to have this hearing. Doesn't mean we can't have more, right? We could, but we generally don't vote to immediately send it to the select board after a hearing. We generally discuss it. So, that's one of the things on the agenda. The next meeting will be in January as well, right? So, we'll be discussing feedback in January, both feedback we get here and feedback we get via email. We'll decide what, if any, changes we want to make. We'll decide if we need another hearing or want another hearing. Depending on that decision, we either send it to the select board or not.
Thank you.
I could also add, I think that any of the meetings that we have subsequent to our previous meetings are all open to the public. They're all open for comments. We'll hear your concerns, positive, negative, whatever, at any of our meetings. So, just because we close this as a hearing doesn't mean we close our ears to other ideas, other people's opinion, people who aren't even here at this meeting. You don't have to have a consistent attendance record or anything like that. Come to a meeting and tell us what you think. That's what we're here to do.
Yeah, and I'm happy to, if folks after this meeting have some thoughts and are like, you know, could you tell the planning commission this? I'm happy to forward anything after the fact so that in advance of the January meetings, additional feedback can come in.
Other comments?
Well, we just came because we wanted to hear about accessory apartments on Gene Thompson. And we've got a permit for a small accessory apartment and are interested and happy that you're looking at the, kind of the step sizing. Probably next year, if this makes it through, we'll see about expanding. It's for us and it's going to be in an existing barn. And so, and we're using one driveway and, you know, we're just, we just don't want to live in a shoebox, but we also don't want to live with our children.
Kind of sums it up though.
We're against that.
We are the in-laws, that's right. We're the assumed. So, we're just thrilled that you're considering it because when we first bought the house and asked about it, we were surprised that there was no review process where you could get an exception or, you know, we're building out a small part of an 8,000-square-foot milk barn. It just seems like, you know, we're just a tiny speck and how could it be that this is not okay? So, I think that you've come up with a nicely considered change and, you know, thank you for the opportunity to note on it.
Andrea?
Yeah, can I just suggest that you put something in here about the fact that you're going to need state permits for an accessory structure if it's over 600 square feet for, if you're renting it out to non-family member?
For fire safety, is that the principal one?
Fire safety, yes. Yes, fire safety. And that's a really important thing to, I think, alert potential, you know, homeowners who are thinking about doing that because it really changes the cost of doing these projects.
We do do that at the staff level because it's not just about that, but water and sewer needs to be addressed as well.
Well, you do mention water and sewer in this.
But you're right, we do mention that and we don't mention fire safety provisions. So, we could add that. I don't know if there are others, what I would be, what I would not advise to do is to try to make it a comprehensive list and have people say, oh, I didn't see it in the town zoning, so I never talked to the state permit specialist. We should probably in this, if we're going to do that, literally refer people to the state permit specialist.
Say there may be state permits that are required to do this.
Just like the state permits say, you're required to get other permits.
Yep.
Who is she, is there something like an occupancy permit? Is there, so the town is responsible for giving the occupancy permits?
But you also need those occupancy permits from fire safety as well.
But it's up to the towns to determine what other permits have been obtained?
No, actually, we don't enforce the state ones. So, the occupancy permit that the zoning administrator gives is just related to the town regs. Those town regs do compel them to get a state wastewater permit. So, that's the one state permit that we will verify, but like the fire safety stuff that Andrea's talking about, we don't, we don't look at that.
And water from the state, you need to show...
Yeah, water and sewer, but nothing else.
But that comes with the... Because I had to deal with that last year.
In terms of accessory apartments, when I read it, it seemed to me that you could do an attached garage and that was a permitted use. But I read through the structure interpretations and everything so that you can put as big a garage as you can get a permit on, on your accessory apartment. What, the way I read it, you can't do any other accessory uses in an accessory apartment because they're accessory to the principal use, which is the house. But I think you may want to think about that. I'm not advocating that you're going to do home, any size home occupation or any size, you know, auto repair business or anything, but I think it should be clarified because it's, you know, I don't know how Alex reads it, but that's, I mean, it's kind of a nitpicking thing.
I'm trying to understand what you're saying. You're talking about, we allow home occupations as an accessory use for somebody living there in the house. You're saying, think about whether those should also be allowed for the person living in the accessory apartment?
Right now, they're not, I'm not necessarily advocating for that because, again, I think it depends on where it is.
Right, but think about it.
It's going to be way out somewhere. One of the reasons to have the accessory uses close to the house was that it was felt that the owner of the house will kind of control what happens in the apartment. And you have a built-in sort of SEF regulating police thing. So, you haven't just moved this thing way out in the middle of nowhere. And I know that, I may not hold water anymore, but years ago, that was one of the rationales. But the way I read it, I don't think you do that because it says accessory to the principal use. And it would be a little bit, it's kind of an interpretation to shift that and then flip it on to the other one. And I think you should, maybe you don't want to go there, but you may want to...
To the extent that anyone else is understanding what you're saying, I think I agree with you that if you had a house and you had an accessory apartment, that the house could have an accessory use like a home occupation, but the accessory apartment couldn't, you couldn't have like a home occupation related to the house and a home occupation related to the accessory apartment. I don't think you could do that.
I don't think an accessory apartment can have a home occupation.
Yeah, I think you're right. I don't think it could.
There are a lot of other things that they then can't have, like accessory structure. like accessory structures, et cetera, et cetera.
Right.
So the way it's written, which may be, may be good, is it's a fairly limited use. It's not a whole new broad-based house. It's an apartment.
What is that home occupation?
So a home occupation is a, a home business. So someone who has an insurance, their insurance agent, and they work out of their house and they receive customers there and they use a little part of their, you know, back room for, yeah, that sort of thing.
Not people who work on the internet but never have anyone visit them?
Yeah, talk to us about that. We generally know, it does sort of depend on whether you're receiving and doing business at the house versus just internet-only deliveries, for example, and that sort of thing. But Peter, could you help on that? Could you think about that? Because your mind is good at this stuff. And, and let me know so in January I can let them know if, you know, give some perspective on it. Thanks.
You're saying though, Peter, that right now, you don't think that an accessory, a home occupation, is permitted in an accessory apartment? Do you think the rules are such?
No, because I don't think it is. Only because, I mean, you could interpret it, my interpretation is since it says accessory use is accessory to the principal use. And probably the principal use is that building there. I don't know how you can transfer that accessory use over to that. Maybe you can, I'm a lawyer.
Yeah, I'm not either, but I think you're right.
Well, it gets to the whole issue of, you know, it's more agricultural businesses, but, you know, providing housing for agricultural employment opportunities. And, you know, you could see in the future, it's like that first gentleman who spoke, you know, that working as a home occupation, that that might not be just limited to the primary residence, you know, that it might in fact be a matter of convenience if it were expanded somewhat. Not, not necessarily spatially, but.
I mean, what we've always done again is it's been based on the impact of the neighborhood.
Yeah.
And when you're, when you're in the ether, there's no impact at all. It's only whether, you know, your business has people coming in and coming out, loaded deliveries. And then we sort of, we used to say, okay, that, that needs some review.
Any other comments? Andrea?
Yeah? So you have that one?
No.
Yeah, okay. I am on to definition of leases.
Which, which document, Andrea? Zoning or subdivision?
I think it's in the subdivision.
You're right.
And I'm trying to find, find it, what page it is. That, that somehow, what I wrote in my notes is like, parking lots and driveways don't constitute development. So you could lease some land and put a parking lot and/or driveway in and it wouldn't have to meet setback regulations? I don't know. I think, all I wrote was we need a definition of whether you're leasing land. I think there's something about leasing land versus a structure. And then on the zoning, 2.5.3.
Wait, wait, Andrea. Can, can you?
I have to.
Can you, can I give, can you take that on as homework assignment?
Yes, 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 I will.
Because I'm not going to, I'm not going to know what you're talking about unless you help me.
Yeah, I didn't write the page number on that one. But on the zoning document, 2.5.3. Let me find it in mine. The setback, it seems like it's a step backwards. That's what I wrote in my notes. Because it's not, it's only applying to structures. And it's not applying to parking lots. And I think we do want it to. Apply to roads and parking lots.
So this is section 2.5.3. I have it up on screen.
Yeah.
Yep. And as the summary indicates, this just clarifies what has been longstanding practice. At least administratively, we've always told folks there are no setbacks for driveways and roads. And there are for parking lots, but not in this section. They've dealt with in the commercial industrial design standards. And it's a very minimal setback of like five feet.
Right.
But anyway, the intent was just to codify in regulations what our longstanding practices have been. That doesn't mean we have to codify it that way. If you think we should, we should require similar setbacks for structures to driveways, roads, and parking lots, we could have that conversation.
Well, I guess it ties into the whole idea of, of, you know, water quality and buffer zones and all that. So, which that's what this section is dealing with is 2.5.2. Is about the stream water. But I guess the setbacks are really just.
Yeah, it's different.
Right, but I, I always, and that's the confusion that we have between buffer and zone, and setback. And I would think we would want to have setback from streams.
So I think, I'm going to, I'm going to scroll up in a moment. I think we have it already. I think what might be a good idea is to, just as at the end of this section, there's a sentence proposed to be added saying, for sign setbacks, see section 545. We probably should have a sentence saying, for stream setbacks, page up to 2.5.
2.
2. Well, that's buffers, 2.5.1. In which, in which we define what setback, stream setbacks are. And, and they do in fact apply to parking lots in addition to structures.
Yeah.
This is why we need a complete overhaul of these regs because you have to look in one section to then go back to another. But we're not doing that. Anyways, so we do have a setback for parking lots with regard to streams. But we don't enforce like a front yard setback requirement or a side or rear yard setback requirement for parking lots, driveways, roads. Which would be problematic if we did, I think. There, there are times when it's difficult to not have a driveway within the front yard setback, especially when the driveway is accessing the front of the property. You know what I'm saying? It necessarily connects to the front of the property. You have to have it within the front yard setback, in any case.
Yeah. Whoops. 2.5.5, what's changing in that?
So I have that section up on screen. 2.5.5.
Yeah.
So.
Oh, I know, I, it says something about, you put this note in about farms and forestry uses?
Yes.
So that's just.
2.5.5 says, basic tenet of zoning. You get one principal use or structure per lot.
Right.
This note is just to say, hey, we know that farms are different and oftentimes there's a principal barn where the business operates and there's a principal dwelling and that's okay.
Okay. The, the other thing, I'm not sure where it is, but I thought, another thing you might want to put in there is, we often know that agricultural buildings are exempt from local zoning. But is there some certificate that they get from the Agency of Agriculture that says they're agriculture and that they're exempt? Because I think they're supposed to get a permit from the Agency of Ag.
So they're not. It's a good question. And Peter knows all about this because it was, it was, it was a bugaboo for him and all zoning administrators. The state has this broad exemption from local zoning for agricultural practices and structures. But it leaves it to the zoning administrator to determine what's exempt. And so what, what is supposed to happen is that the landowner is supposed to, to make an application to notify the town, the town, the zoning administrator, that they're planning to build a structure. And that notification should suffice. And it's up to the zoning administrator to say, that is an exempt structure, you're good to go. Or it's not, you need a permit. And then if there's a disagreement, it can be appealed. But ultimately, that power rests with the zoning administrator. The way our practice that Peter instituted, which is a good one, other towns are copying us on this, is that we tell folks two things. We say, I tell folks, get the permit anyway. Don't, don't exercise the exemption. Because if you ever want to use the building for something other than ag, it'll be fine and it'll all be permitted. When they say, yeah, but Alex, I don't want to pay that huge permit fee and the exemption means I don't have to. I say, okay. The protocol Peter devised was, here's the permit application. We'll help you fill it out with a map and the form. And then the ZA will deem it exempt and we'll put it in our file. So that if anybody comes by later, there's a record that that structure was built and what it was built as and where, and that it was deemed exempt.
But, so, so then if they wanted to get a permit because it was no longer used as ag, and they didn't meet the setback requirements?
Well, they have to meet.
They do have to.
Well, it's, it's an open question at that point whether it would constitute some sort of pre-existing non-compliant situation. That's another reason why I tell people, just get the permit anyways. Meet the setbacks. Don't, don't play with, don't play the exemption game because it could come back to bite you later.
Right. But who, then who really determines what's ag and?
The zoning administrator.
And they don't?
They, they oftentimes ask the Agency of Agriculture for help
Yes.
in that determination. But ultimately, it's the zoning administrator that, based on statute, says, you're exempt.
But Alex, I thought they had to meet the setbacks.
So, good question. They do have to meet the setbacks unless they don't want to and the Secretary of the Agency of Agriculture gives them an exemption.
Okay.
So they, they, if they were to come into the office and say, hey, I want to do this thing and it's exempt, our ZA would say, show me, tell me, fill out the form. If it meets the setbacks, you're fine. If it doesn't meet the setbacks, I'm, you know, you need to go get that exemption from the agency. And if you don't have it, I'm going to come after you.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, so Andrea, we really do need them to fill out a permit for my office because we treat them, we assess them just like everybody else. And also, I just wanted to mention that there's been two or three that people that were ready to sell and didn't have the permit and then had to come in and get it recently, correct?
After the fag?
After the fag.
Yeah.
And it's.
Often with these horse.
They're always all haired out, what people are. To me, it seems like.
Horse facilities. Because somehow the horse lobby got it in there that if you have four or more horses, you're, you're an agricultural entity and you can get the exemption. And then the moment there are no longer four horses, but down to two, then they're, they technically lose the exemption.
Or the buyer doesn't want to have horses.
That has happened recently with one of the sales and the person came in and got the permit after the fact.
But it was right before his closing and he was very, you know.
Yeah.
So I like what Alex says, that get the permit. I think that's good advice.
Yeah, that's what we advise them to. But there are times when a farmer is building a very large barn and the permit cost would be substantial. And so, well, I think the Hollandbeek barn that was restored on Baldwin Road was an example of that. So they chose to exercise the exemption so as not to have to pay, you know, several thousand dollars in permit fees.
Can I ask about the contiguous area of strikeout? I don't quite understand.
Yeah.
It's, it's a little hard to read on screen because it's all under strikeout. But the basic premise is that this is an outdated provision, one that I for one, never quite understood the rationale for. And has, it makes it difficult for certain special properties that might be divided by features. So rather than have it and not be able to explain what the benefit of it is, there was discussion about it. Jesse was actually here for that. He's got one of those special properties. And the decision was made, we don't need it. It doesn't serve any public good.
I mean, this may be a dumb question. But then if all those things listed in there divide a piece of property, is the piece of property actually two lots with two development possibilities? Whereas before it was one lot?
No, this, this is principally, comes into play when somebody's creating a lot. So they have, they're doing a subdivision and they have a natural break in the property that they'd like to use for the subdivision. Like in Jesse's case, it's several roads. And the area that sort of is a natural new lot also happens to have, you know, Patrick Brook running through part of it. And in the, because of that, it's broken into two pieces by Patrick Brook. Neither one of them meets this requirement and therefore the subdivision becomes impossible. Even the lot looks like, I mean, it looks like a perfectly viable lot and would meet all the rest of the zoning. So that's the. That's the situation that it's, we're trying to fix is. Especially since I, unless, maybe you know something I don't, Peter. But I remember you and I talking. I don't, I don't, I can't remember us understanding what public good this was serving.
Okay.
I'll ask another question?
Sure.
Okay, 5.1, number five, it's about traffic. And I guess that's the opportunity for the DRB to ask for a traffic study? Because I'm just questioning, whose standards are you using? What's the baseline data that you have to judge whether it's compatible with the usual neighborhood stuff?
So no, this was not intended to be a green light to have a traffic study for every home occupation that wanted to go in.
Right.
This was, this preserves, the first sentence preserves language in the current regs. So under strikeouts, you'll see the, it says, no traffic shall be generated in volumes that would be greater than normally expected in a neighborhood of similar type. So we're keeping that in essence. But the second sentence is new and that's recognizing that, that traffic levels on high-volume roads can be larger for home occupations than traffic levels on low-volume roads. So it's not designed to require traffic study. And, and there isn't a standard by which the board would make their decisions other than common sense and, and the description of the home occupation provided in the application.
Alex, am I right in remembering that we actually sent that issue to the DRB asking for their comment? What, what do you need? What do you want in the regulations to allow you to make a decision? And they were comfortable with this language?
They were. There was, there was a lack of comfort on the commission's part and mine as well in eliminating the last sentence under strikeouts that actually creates a very firm number. Like you shall not have over 15 round trips related to the business. Because that's an easy, that's easy to enforce. And so we were kind of reluctant to get rid of, you know, hard and fast requirements. But John's right, we sent it to the DRB and they said, no, we, we've, we see lots of these things. We can tell when the business is going to be out of, out of character and is on a road that shouldn't have that much traffic. Further, I researched our Chittenden County towns anyways and they're all very similar to this language. They, they don't have bright lines. They allow a lot of discretion to both the zoning administrator and the DRB with, with regard to home occupations. More?
I'll stop.
You're done?
I have some others, but I think it'll be easier if I just talk to Alex about them.
Want the final one, John?
Yeah, sure, Peter.
Where's the cheesecake?
We've eliminated that, Peter.
Oh, yeah, I know, I was saying.
It's been, it's been...
Budget cuts, budget cuts, recisions.
Right.
Talk to your select board member, it's terrible.
There's only so many freaking hours in a day.
That's for sure.
Plus, I think the real answer is that it's the holiday time, so we're all about to eat way too many cookies and cakes, so we didn't want to, we didn't want to add to your cholesterol level tonight. Hey, I do have a leftover present for you, though. It's been in my desk for a while. You might have wanted a replenishment of those.
Thank you. You can roll up.
Yeah, well, there you go, some more.
All right. So I guess if there are no more comments, we'll close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank everybody for coming, all the people who left already. Thank them for coming.
Where do you, where do you want to go from here, remaining board members? Want to just put this on as one of your agenda items for your January meeting?
I think we'll need that. I don't, I don't see us making significant headway on reasonable amount of time.
Are there any of these changes that you'd like me to draft, some language revisions for between now and then, or do you want to just put it off and talk about them more and then have me draft?
I think we need to discuss...
Go through all the comments? Okay. Can I just, can I just for the record recall that we did get these comments in writing? We didn't walk through them all, but they were from, I'll just list names, Heidi Simkins, Marion Wilmot, Nancy Wright, Roger Cohn, Nancy Dunlap, Richard Anderson, Crocker Bennett, Wayne Masika. Those are the folks who submitted written comments.
And that's in our package?
Yes, that was in your packet and is on the table there as well.
Okay. So I guess we can move on to minutes from November 29th.
I had one small suggestion. There's a reference to a question that, that I raised having to do with impact fees, and really what I was asking about was, what's the relationship between establishing impact fees and creating a capital budget? And how, how do they fit together? And that's what we then discussed. So I would ask our secretary to just make a note that, that the real point of my question was, what's the relationship between impact fees and capital budget?
So you want to point out a particular paragraph or something where we should be making adjustments, or...
Uh, yeah, there's, I can get the copy of the minute.
It's page, it's page two, the third paragraph down.
Starts off, J.K.
Thank you.
I don't think I have a copy of the minutes up there for you, John, if that's where you're headed. No, sorry. It sounds like Dawn's got it.
I didn't have anything else.
Other comments or amendments? A motion?
To approve the minutes of... Sorry.
November 29th.
November 29th.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Abstain. Stain.
Well, then we gotta take it up next meeting.
Yep.
Sorry.
Only three of us.
All right, other business.
Just the notice, what's on the agenda there, that I think I sent you electronically about the Town of Huntington's regulation revisions.
Yep.
Which is a public hearing happening next week. Oh, and one thing I forgot, back to the public hearing, even though you've closed it, thankfully, John, you know, invited folks to continue submitting comments between now and January. Mitch Sykes, our zoning administrator, had reviewed most of these changes and given me comments, and it all got worked into your product. He took a second look, or maybe it was his first, I forget. He seemed to think he didn't get a look at the subdivision regs. And he did have, I think, three or four suggestions for additional revisions, so I'll just summarize those in a memo and ship it to you for the January meeting, so you can just add it to the mix of refinements and possible improvements. I just didn't want to forget, I wanted Dawn to have it in the record that Mitch had some comments, good ones actually, several of which I think should, should be made.
So what's on our agenda for January? The village zoning?
Two items. This, you know, reviewing the feedback from the housekeeping changes and deciding what to revise based on that, and the village growth area zoning changes, specifically this conversation about square footage caps for certain types of uses.
Is it, is there any schedule, date, time limit in terms of getting our comments all together and having a package for the housekeeping changes to go to the select board? Maybe you have something you desire, but are there some limits that we have to do it at a certain time?
Statutorily, there's, there's no real limit for your forwarding the proposal to the select board. There is an implied limit, and the select board has a limit in how long they can take to process them and approve them. They need to act within one year of this hearing. You closed it, so the hearing's over. So within one year of today, they have to take action or they're, or they're considered disapproved.
Okay.
So I suppose if you fumbled around for a whole year and didn't forward them, then it would be the same thing. But in any case, yeah, there, you don't have to forward them within 15 days or 60 days of the hearing, you can take your time. Just know that the more time you take from your public hearing, the less time you give the select board. And we had, that shouldn't be an issue, but in fact, it did become an issue in the last set of changes that you passed to them. It took them a very long time to get to them. My hope was that, the select board is completely booked with budget work through the end of January. My hope was that you could forward it to them by the end of January so that in February they could take it up when they had a little slack time.
I don't know if that ever happens with that board. Sounds good though, Alex.
Yeah, well, they're meeting weekly now, so...
I know.
Slack time might just mean going back to every other week.
Yeah.
All right. I think the only other thing, Alex, was that town report.
Right.
It sounds like you were gonna make some...
I just had a couple of grammatical things and didn't...
Maggie, Maggie has been grammatically auditing as well, so...
So how do you want to do that? Ann Thomas is looking for that, for all of the reports for the town report by Friday. Yeah, if you give me that, I can make the changes, forward it on to Ann.
Thank you.
What I'll do is, once I have this corrected and the DRB's report and the zoning administrator's report and my report, if I write one, sometimes I wonder why I write one, I'll forward all of those to all of you. Last year I did the same thing, sort of said, hey, happy end of year, here's what all of our planning and zoning team is reporting on for the town report, you know? Sneak peek before the reports get printed.
We've seen the final draft from Joe on this already.
Right, there's just a few typos and such to clean up.
All right, motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Thank you, everybody. We're done.
Well, good job.